Blessing to go ahead and get the meeting started, okay? We just love waiting for attorneys, right? Okay, okay. Well, first of all, before I call the meeting to order, I want to welcome all of you. And we're so excited that you took the time to put your homes on the San Ana Historic Register. You've got beautiful homes, and we just thank you for just taking the time to preserve a little bit of history that Santa Ana has, okay? And thank you for being here also. With that, I want to call the meeting to orders, the Historic Resource Commission meeting on November 7th, 2016. And I have 4:44 PM. And Madam Secretary, would you please hold the roll call?
Alberta Christie?
Here.
Phil Becerra?
Here.
Monica Garcia?
Here.
Lawrence Hitterdale?
Here.
Edward Murashi?
Here.
Mike Tardif?
Here.
Philip Schaefer? Madam Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you so much. Commissioner Hitterdale, would you lead us in the pledge? And would everyone please stand? Please join me in pledging allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before I go on to our regular commission agenda, last month, commissioners, if you noticed that we had a camera that was over there, okay, taking film. I just thought it was the city, okay? And then we had a gentleman sitting over there, and we had a couple of people sitting there next to the camera. Those were the professor and students from Orange Coast College, okay? And what's so unique about this? Orange Coast College is helping make historic districts within the city of Santa Ana by volunteering as a class project, doing all the paperwork and documentation, so they know that Floral Park is going through, West Floral Park, looking at Morrison, Morrison Park, right, Morrison Park. And no one told us everything, so not until the meeting was all over and everything, and I'm going, "So what were you guys doing?" You know, you get everything? And they were taking our commission meeting back to the classroom. So I've asked our secretary, Rosa, to send a thank you letter to the class, the professor and the class, at Orange Coast College for being here, in addition for helping us, you know, conserve our historic homes, and then also the integrity of the neighborhood by helping make historic districts. So let's give Orange Coast College a hand. Okay? Now, we'll continue on with the agenda. Are there any comments from the public that is not agendized? Anyone would like to speak about? Hi Lisa, how are you? That's okay. All right? If not, we'll move to the consent calendar. Are any commissioners that have anything they want to pull from the consent calendar? Not? Is there a motion?
Move to approve the consent calendar.
Moved by Commissioner Tara?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Murashi. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
All opposed? And with the one absent of Commissioner Schaefer. Okay, it passes. Okay? Next item is our business calendar. And this is where commissioners communicate disclosure on any agendized projects and so forth that we have. I'd just like to say that Commissioner Murashi and I toured all 13 properties today. He was the navigator, we only got lost once. I was the driver. Anyone else?
Madam Chair, if I could mention that I virtually toured all the homes through Google Street View on my desktop monitor. It came out really well.
Good. You've got to come with us and meet the people.
That's nice, that's good too.
Absolutely, okay, all right. Anyone else? If not, we'll move on to the agenda. Let's begin with the public hearings. Holly Svecek, do your presentation, please. She will do each home, and then after the staff presentation, we will then proceed with the opening of the public hearing on each individual property, okay? We will have where we will invite you up to speak, and if you'd like to speak, once again, for those who've just joined us, please fill out a form on your property. We'll bring it back to the commission, and we'll have a discussion, and then we will vote, okay?
Good evening, commissioners. I'm happy to be with you tonight, and welcome to all of our wonderful homeowners that are here this evening. As you can see, we have quite a full agenda for tonight. These are all the cases that are coming before you this evening. And there's a list of the addresses, and they all have self-nominated for their properties to be put on the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties. For this first group, we are recommending the contributive category, and for the commission's reminder, that for that contributive category, the building must contribute to the overall category of the neighborhood, and must be a good example of period architecture. So the first property for tonight is the Goodman House. It was built in 1925, and the first occupants were Jess and Olive Goodman. They lived there quite a long time, until 1944, when they sold the house. The Goodmans were very active members of the community. Mrs. Goodman belonged to the E. Bell Society. Mr. Goodman was a member of the Santa Ana Breakfast Club. Now, the Goodmans owned a tire store, where they were the only franchisee in Southern California that sold Sampson tires, which were quite popular in the 1920s. They had their main tire store in Fullerton called Goodman Tire, and they made quite a good living for themselves, and enjoyed themselves in this home. The second property tonight is the Dr. Edwards House. As you can see, it's a Spanish colonial style with the quintessential red tiled barrel roof tiles. It also has several arches, arched windows, and arched porch entries that are very common in this particular style of architecture. It has a smooth stucco coating as well, as well as two quatrefoils below each, at the gable apex of each roof line, each bay. The house itself is built in 1925 for James and Maxine Edwards. Dr. Edwards was a captain in the army during World War II, where he served as the doctor for the armed forces there. He also had an office that was located at 214 East Walnut Street, that that property was actually, it still stands. It was built in 1928, so right after they arrived here in Santa Ana, they had the office built. This property is nominated for the contributive category. It is the Schulz House. It was difficult for me to see if this was actually Schulz or Schultz, because it came up in several different records both ways. So for this, we will have it in the Schulz section, and it's also referenced as Schultz in the DPR form, just in the event. This was, is that 1150 West River Lane? The significance of this house was that it was designed by Ralph Allen, who was a fellow American, American Institute of Architecture. He specialized in modern concrete buildings, which you see in our very own Orange County Law Library, right next to us, which he designed. He also designed Century High School and Fremont Elementary School here in Santa Ana. The first occupants of this home were Carl and Ethel Schulz. Carl went to Cal State Long Beach, obtained his degree, and he eventually went on to become the dean of instruction here at our very own Santa Ana College. So they had a lot of ties to the local area, and the house itself was built in 1967, and it's on a massive 22,000-plus square foot lot. Very unique style of architecture. The Dever House was researched by Ivan Orozco, and I'd like to have him go ahead and give presentation for this property.
So the Dever House, located at 2502 North Valencia, is an interesting ranch-style home. As you can see, it's stucco with a mixture of brick facade on the front elevation. There is a bay window, multi-light, which is common in a ranch-style homes. The original occupants of the Dever House were John Henry Dever and Mary Elizabeth, his spouse. He was actually an accountant for Watson's Drug Store in Orange, in the city of Orange, which is still around today, a little different than what it was originally. And she, Mary Elizabeth, was actually a member of the YWCA, the Young Women's Christian Association, which they had the property until about 2002, when the property was transferred over to the current owner, Joyce Keller.
Thank you, Ivan. The next property is at 412 West Santa Clara. It is a lovely English Revival style. It was also a Roy Russell house. As you know, he was a very prolific builder, especially in the Floral Park area. The first residents of the house were Charles and Alameda, or Alma, Chick. Charles and Alma were middle-class society, but he worked at a salesman, as a salesman, at the Cafeteria of Shoes on 4th Street, 404 West 4th Street, to be exact. He was actually instrumental in this new sales concept that was created at this particular location, and first in the whole United States and in Orange County, that they had, instead of the shoe store where you would go in and the shoe salesman would rush over and help you find your shoe size, perhaps x-ray your feet to find out what kind of feet you have, and what type of shoe would fit you the best, you were actually, as a customer, would come in and choose your own shoe, and try it on yourself, and then if you were ready to purchase, you would bring it to the cashier to buy it. This was a revolutionary concept back in the day of this, when this particular home was built in the 20s.
Can we get a shoe salesman today? No.
The next house is the Barlow-Cultis House at 524 East Virginia. This is also a Spanish colonial revival. Again, you could see that it has the gable treatment, which is really an attic vent, just underneath the gable apex facing the front. It also has a typical covered porch. This one has the red tile roofs as well, with portions of the roof being flat. This house was built for Joseph and Ethel Barlow. Joseph was a metal worker in the automobile industry when they moved to California. His first job here in California was at the Central Auto Body, which was located on East 3rd Street. It's still located there. They lived in the house for quite a while, and then later went on to sell the house to Spiro and Elsie Cultis. They were immigrants from Greece, who they came across on the boat, went through Ellis Island in New York, were married there, and they moved to California to start their new life. And Spiro was a waiter at one of the local Santa Ana hotels. The Dr. Getty's House is really the quintessential ranch-style home. It's very horizontal and linear, the way that the ranch house style was designed to be. It has a combination of composite shingle with a few tiles at the roof, top of the roof line there, and the ridge line. It has a circular driveway that was very popular at the time when this house was built. It was first lived in by David Koffoid Geddes and his wife Carol. Mabel was his mother, so there is an error in the DPR form. It should be David and Carol. Dr. Geddes went to the School of Maryland, University School of Medicine. He later, when he came out to Santa Ana, this was their first home, and he was the head of psychiatry for St. Joe's over in Orange. This is the Rogers Warren House. It was built by E. C. Rogers, and first occupants were Chester and Pearl Warren. So because Mr. Rogers was a notable builder in Santa Ana, we chose to include his name in the designation. The Warrens were also very active in the community. Mr. Warren Chester was the chair of the Budget Committee for the Community Chest. He also was the head of the War Chest Drive back in 1942, and he was president of the local office of the Federal Housing Authority here in Santa Ana. They both lived for, to ripe old ages, but they are currently buried in Fairhaven Cemetery.
So we're looking at the Wenner House here, located at 2402 North Park. Another example of ranch-style construction, originally built in 1950. As you can see, it shows stucco, stucco low-pitch hip roof throughout, which is common in the ranch-styled homes. Large picture windows, two can be seen on the front elevation and throughout around the other street-side elevation. The first residents for this property were actually really important to the city and its creation and involvement. The original owners, Samuel Wenner and his wife Lillian, were Russian immigrants who migrated to Montreal in 1923 with their children and several members of their extended family. They were tailors by trade, so they knew the clothing manufacturing trade there. They actually opened a business in the city of Westminster with the knowledge that they had, and so they took advantage of that and created almost like a beginning for them and their family. Mr. Wenner, along with his brother Jack, were really important to the city of Santa Ana. They were instrumental in the creation of the Temple Beth Shalom, originally located on 8th Street and Bush. They sort of outgrew their location, which they moved to the current address, 2625 North Tustin. And he was a very instrumental person in the creation of the organization as a vice president and later a treasurer for the Temple Beth. And he was given the nickname Mr. Beth Shalom, so he is a very important person in the history of Santa Ana, and this is his home.
The Urbine House is a craftsman-style home. It is clad in clabbered siding, and you can see it has two porch pedestals that have two-tone decorative brick on the bottom of the porch line. They also, which is typical of craftsman-style, have tripartite windows, which are windows that have three parts, and you can see that on either side of the front porch area. It has three concrete steps leading up to that porch area to the front entry. And I know it's difficult to see in this picture, but the front door is original. The first owners of the home were Edward and Nellie Urbine, and they had a business in Santa Ana, located in what is now known as the Grand Central Market Building, over where Cal State Fullerton has their art center. Within that market, they had the Urbine Meat Market. Now, they must have done very, very well for themselves, because Mr. Urbine retired in 1966 at 55 years old. He bought a large, a large amount of property in Huntington Beach, and was able to just go ahead and enjoy being a modern woodman, which was a fraternal organization in the day, and still is an active fraternal organization. And he was also a card-carrying member of the National Rifle Association.
The Eagle House was an example of English Revival, originally constructed in 1925. As you can see, it has high-pitched side gable roof with rectangular vents under the apex, wood frame, multi-light windows throughout. The original, I'm sorry, the door, as you can see, it's a very strong door with a peek-a-boo window, very common to this style of architecture. The Eagle House, as an example of English Revival, shows that there is a use of multiple materials, very unique characteristics, as you can see even on the top of the chimney there, with the use of different materials. The original owners were Mr. Roland P. Eagle, who is, who was a physician and surgeon, and his wife Esther. Mr. Eagle practiced medicine here in the downtown, different locations of the downtown, and he was also a member of the Santa Ana Roaring Lions Club. Ms. Esther was known to host lavish parties, as it was common back in the day, almost like a sign of wealth. Esther transferred the property to Mr. Daniel O'Neil and Leah O'Neil, who were actually owners of O'Neil's hasty-moving and storage business, and that was in 1949. In circa 1991, the property was purchased by Mr. Blake Anderson, and Mr. Blake was actually an important member of a Southern California Motorcycling Association, which is still around today. He was very important in that type of activity. Mr. Blake Anderson passed, and he left the property to Ms. Giovanna Piazza as the owner.
The property located at 1825 North Ross Street is another Spanish colonial style. Again, you can see this is very common. There's large archways that are at the top of the window and at the front entry. This roof line, again, is capped with red roof tile. Often, also common to this style of architecture is the front yard becoming kind of a small courtyard. The Oaks House was built in 1927 by Charles and Abby Oaks. Charles was, spent most of his adult life as a captain in the Merchant Marines, and so Abby also had grown up in a sailing family, so they got along very well together. And they, they lived in this house and had multiple adventures, including writing a book about their adventures, about shipwrecks, dramatic rescues, typhoons he'd been in during the Merchant Marine years. And he was also a member of the YMCA here in Santa Ana, on the corner of Ross, and he was also a very talented singer. And the house was sold many more times before being owned by the current owner, the Harkins. The final home we recommend for the landmark category, which is, to remind the commission, it is eligible to be placed in the National Register, or that it's eligible to be placed on the state register. It has a very significant historical aspect to the city, and has a very unique architectural significance. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we placed a property on the register that was called the Bailey House. This house, and it was a ranch-style of architecture. This particular one was owned by the brother of Mr. Bailey of that home. This is Stanley Bailey, at 2435 North Riverside Drive. This building is quite unique and absolutely beautiful. It has a smooth stucco coating. As you can see, it's got a balconyette to the side on the right bay. The front entry is right, you see the rounded rotunda tower portion of it. It also has an arched window and arched entry there. A lot of the windows here are of different styles, types, and shapes, which is somewhat unique to this style of architecture, but not unheard of. But this is a very unique style, and it is in excellent condition, and is definitely eligible for the register based on architecture alone. And with that, staff would like to recommend that the properties shown here tonight be listed on the Santa Ana Register of Historical Properties, with the last one being listed as landmark, and all others as contributive. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to answer. Or Ivan?
Thank you, Holly. Okay. Now is the time for the public hearing for agenda item number one, Historic Resource Commission application number 2016-06, Historic Register categorization number 2016-06, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement number 2016-06. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? This is your time to talk about your homes. Are the owners, owners in, let's see, June, is it Marie Rango? No? No one there? Okay, no problem. Okay. Madam Secretary, have we received any written communication? Okay. If not, then I have. Now I would declare that the public hearing is now closed. I will bring it back to the commission. Does the commissioner, any commissioner, have any questions or comments on this item?
I'd like to move the item, Madam Chair.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Oh. Sorry.
I'd like to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission application number 2016-06, and Historic Register categorization number 2016-06, and recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and the clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with June Magaro, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Now I'll second it.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Tara, seconded by Commissioner Becerra. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carried with the abstention of, with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Congratulations. Let's give them a hand. Thank you. Moving on, we're now moving on to item number two, Historic Resource Commission application 2016-10, Historic Register categorization number 2016-09, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-10. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? Does anyone wish to speak on this property? Are the owners, David or Glenda Fink, here in the audience? Hi. Mr. Fink, if you would, after your speech, if you would see our secretary, Rosa, and just fill out a seat.
All right. I just wanted to thank you all for the hard work, and we really enjoy the neighborhood, new to the neighborhood, and have really enjoyed being part of Santa Ana, and look forward to many years here, and thank you all for the hard work. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Any other comments from the public? If not, I will now close the hearing and bring it back to the commission. Does any commissioner have any comments?
Madam Chair, I would like to...
Hold up, I do. Okay. Okay, I'm sorry. Okay. Mr. Fink, on your, I notice your gate ornament, you know, because you're keeping it all within that Spanish revival there, and as you go in, that is the most ornate ornament on that gate going to your back. It looked like it was taken off of a royal... It looked like it was taken off of a royal carriage or something from Spain.
The previous owner must have loved those treatments, because there were a lot of those on the inside of the home, and we left that on the outside, but we're trying to soften that a little bit. It was a big emblem on the gate that you were talking about on that entrance, yeah?
It just goes, it fits.
Thank you.
But anyway, it just sets it apart out there, like, yes, this is what you would expect for a Spanish-style home on there, but it is very unique. Okay? Okay. Any other commissioner have any comments? Okay, if not?
Madam Chairman, I would like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-10, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-09. I would also like to recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with David and Galinda Fink, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Seconded by, moved by Commissioner Marashi, seconded by Commissioner Bussar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Moving on to Item Number Three, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-11, Historic Register Categorization 2016-10, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2016-11. The public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? Are the owners, the Andretti's here. Is this Commissioner Eric Andretti?
I believe so, yeah.
I believe so.
Oh my God.
Is it?
Yes, I mean, we went there, boy, I tell you, that's a press-up home, as you step up to that. Okay, we just want to make sure. Okay? Okay? If not, we'll close the public hearing and bring it back to the commission. Do commissioners have any, oh, I'm sorry. Are there any written communications, the secretary? No? Okay. A commissioner have any comments?
I have a comment, Madam Chair.
Yes.
I don't know if it's possible to bring the pictures up on the screen of this home, and maybe the homes as we consider them. Perfect, thank you. I was wondering if the wall on the front of the home on the left, as we're looking at it, was that something added to the original structure, do you know? It seems to be kind of hiding something behind it.
No, that was the character of the house. They internalized the outdoor space, it's a 1950s house, and so you would often find those houses, that style of development, where you had an enclosed entry space. The Eichler Homes were like that. I don't know if you are familiar with the Eichler Homes, yeah?
As you walk up the pathways and onto that, and you pass the walls there, and then it's the entrance that you go into the house. So it's kind of recessed in the back, and I guess that's the style of hiding or keeping their privacy during that time period. But as you go up into that, there's like a little court, and then you enter the house there, and it's all glass, everything else that's-
It does have a beautiful entrance, once you get past that and you get up to that gate. The entry, the whole front courtyard, is about the width of that block wall that you see. And it is a pretty block wall, but once you get past that and you look into there, it is a beautiful entrance to the home, like Hubbard says.
I just wanted to point out that the photo looks really clear down here, but up there it's really dark. I don't, the audience probably can't see what we're talking about, that fence, or the wall, sorry. Or is it just me?
You're right.
Yeah, it's really clear down here, and up there it's dark, so just wanted to point that out.
Okay.
I have one question for staff. I'm looking at the report, and it says that it was constructed in 1967, but according to the ordinance, the properties that we consider are usually 50 years or more. And looking at our whole slew of homes that are before us today, the overwhelming majority of them are from the 1920s, I think we have one from the 40s and one from the 50s. So I'm just curious, according to our code, it says that in order to go beyond the, or under the 50-year mark, it would have to have exceptional significance. What was that finding?
Its exceptional significance is that it was designed by Ralph Allen, who was a master architect. He actually went on to become a fellow for the American Institute of Architecture.
But wasn't Mr. Allen more known, as you pointed out in your presentation, more known for schools, our public law library right over here?
Correct. He did do several residences, but that wasn't his primary thing. This was a foray, this was sort of like his passion, but it's, so this was something he really wanted to do versus what he did for a living.
Okay.
And if I'm not mistaken, doesn't Mr. Allen live on River Main, Ralph?
He does.
He does.
Yes, he does.
So it does, I hope you've got an answer to your question, so it does qualify? All right. Any other questions? Okay, then is there a motion?
Madam Chairman?
Mm-hmm.
I'll move that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2016-11, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-10, and also that we recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Eric and Carol Alderetti, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second?
I second that motion.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Hiddendale, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? No, no opposing, and with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Let's give him the hand, let's give this property a hand. Moving on to Item Number Four, Historic, now is the, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-14, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-13, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement Number 2016-14. Public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? Are the owners, Joyce M. Keller? Ms. Keller?
Oh, sorry, is that 2502? Yes. Oh, it is. Let's find that too.
Well, no, no, keep the, get the picture of the home. That's, yeah. Ms. Keller?
I just wanted to say that it's a delightful house to live in, perfectly proportioned, beautiful little extras. And I would like to thank everybody who assisted in my application for the Mills Act.
Very good. Would you fill out a form for us? Okay, thank you. Anyone else in the public that wish to speak on this particular property? Do we have any written communication?
No.
Okay. Then I now declare the public hearing now closed, bring it back to the commission. Any other commissioners have any questions? Is there a motion? Okay, Commissioner Garcia?
I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2016-14, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-13, and I'd like to recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Joyce M. Keller, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay. Moved by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Taras. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? No, no, one absent, it passes. Congratulations. Okay, let's move on to Item Number Five, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016, 2016-16, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-15, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-16. Okay? Public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? Is Atticus Wegman here? Okay, no problem. If not, then I now, have we received any written communication? None, okay? Public hearing is now closed, okay? I will now bring it back before the commission. Does any of the commissioners have any comments? Not, entertain a motion. Anybody, oh, don't all speak up at once.
Madam Chair, I'd like to recommend a motion to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2016-16, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-15, and recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Atticus Wegman, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Moved by Commissioner Taras, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Commissioner Bussar. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Let's give it to property owner a hand. Moving on to Item Number Six, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-17, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-16, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-28. The public hearing is now open. Is there anyone from the public that would like to speak on this property? If not, Madam Secretary, do we have any written communication? If not, I declare the public hearing closed. Does any, I'll bring it back to the commission. Does any of the commissioners have any questions? Then, a motion?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-17, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-16. I also recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Blake Bailey, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Commissioner Garcia, she was over here whispering earlier.
Okay, you got it.
Moved by Commissioner Marowski, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Is Mr. Bailey in the house? No? Well, let's give him a hand. Item Number Seven, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-18, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-17, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-17. Public hearing is now open, and we do have comments from Morka Liti?
Liti, yes.
Liti, there you are, okay?
Thanks for having us this evening. My husband, Mike, and I just bought the home in November of last year, so we're coming up on our one-year anniversary of being in the home.
Congratulations.
Thank you. We are so in love with the house. We, not a lot to say about the house, but just so you know that it's in very good hands for the preservation historically. We are high school sweethearts, screw-up intestine, lived in orange most of our lives, and we used to ride our bikes into the Park Santiago neighborhood. We're actually neighbors of, oh, Joyce left, but we're actually just down the street from Joyce, who just got her home on the registry. We used to ride our bikes through this neighborhood, and that's kind of how we found and started looking in this area, because we just would, you know, with all of the mature trees and all of the vintage homes, we kind of just would dream that one day we would live here, and so we offered on several houses, and this, I'm so glad that we got this one, we're just absolutely smitten with it. So, thank you very much for the consideration. I think the last couple of owners, they didn't have quite the resources or time to really put into the restoration of some of the original features inside. The outside is certainly in wonderful condition, and we have beautiful original wood floors and windows, but a few of our really big hopes and dreams for the inside is to restore, you know, the clawfoot tub that was probably in the original bathroom, and using penny tiles. We did some updates to our kitchen, and even some shelving in the closet, and we've done a lot of research in making sure that the hardware is consistent with that of the period, and that we're using materials and things and design elements that would really be Spanish colonial revival in the 1920s. So, definitely in good hands with us. We are absolutely in love with the historical charm of this home and the neighborhood, so thank you for your consideration.
No, thank you, a whole lot. Okay? Any other? Okay? Any written communication? Okay? If not, I declare the public hearing closed, and move it back to the commission. Okay?
Madam Chair, I'd like to go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2016-18, and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-17, and that we recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and the Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Michael and Morgan Liti, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
Okay. All those in favor say aye.
I would like to second that.
Oh, second, sorry. I'm so excited about young love over there.
Madam Chair, I'd also like to say that when we were there visiting the house, the neighbor two doors down came running out and talked to us for quite a while, and had nothing but nice things to say about them, and how he knew that they were going to take good care of the house.
Absolutely. Okay. Moved by Commissioner Bussar, seconded by Commissioner Rushi, I forgot. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Alan Schaefer. Let's give him a hand. Okay, moving on to Item Number Eight, filed by Moore Family, I'm sorry, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-19, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-18, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-18. Okay? Public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the public? And we have, is it Andrew Moore?
Moore.
Moore.
No, I just wanted to say thank you for considering us. We have a little bit of extra information to make it into Hallie's report. We bought the house from the Geddys. Carol Geddys was still living in it when we bought it, so they-
Could you talk into the microphone?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah, we bought the house from the Geddys. Carol Geddys was still living in the house when we bought it. They both, her and her husband both died in 2015, but they were living, she was living there until months before her death, and her husband, a couple months earlier, had moved into assisted living. So, they had, it was actually their second house in Santa Ana as well, because they had a house on Santa Clara that they had built in 1952, and then this was their dream house that they built on River Lane. They bought the property and they had the house. They had the land for a couple of years before they actually built the house. And so they hired the architect and the builder- And so, they hired the architect and the builder, and the architect was a relatively well-known architect from the area. He was actually the chairman of the Orange County Architects AIA for, in the 60s. His name was J. Herbert Brownell. We have all of the architectural drawings and everything of the house. So, so he's, the office they built, if you're ever driving down PCH, just when you're coming, going north from Fashion Island, just when you get down to the marina, actually, no, it's, sorry. After that, on the cliff side, there's a building that says Architect on it. If you ever see it on the side, up on the cliff side from the beach, that's the office of this architect. And so, there's a bunch of houses in Orange County and San Diego that he designed, as well as the builder was also a famous builder in the area, and that's noted in the stuff, so. So, we just wanted to, the Geddys loved the house. It was their pride and joy, and they picked us to buy. They had many offers that were better than ours, but they decided they wanted us to live there, so we were honored to have it. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Any other comments from the audience? Madam Secretary, do we have any written communication?
No.
Okay, if not, clear the public hearing close, and bring it back before the commission. Any comments?
I just want to make a comment real quick. We had a lovely conversation with your wife, and she mentioned how she cleaned out, cleared out a bunch of trees and stuff, and the neighbors saw the house for the first time and loved it. But she also talked about the pride and everything else the previous family had, and how they pointed out where they had Christmas in their house and all that sort of stuff. It's great to have that connection, thank you.
Yeah, it was funny, when we bought the house, some of the stone walls you saw in front, we didn't even know they were there, because there was so much vegetation going on around it. All you could see was the front door.
That's what your wife said, and then the neighbors came out and said, "We didn't know that there was a wall there." "We didn't know that that was there." And what was so interesting about it is that the selection of you and your wife and your family, it's like so many homeowners, they put their heart in the home, it's a family home. And one of the things that they didn't want was to come in to give it to a flipper?
Yeah.
Okay, or a developer, or anything. And they said, when you, you and your wife came to purchase it, and they just fell in love and say, you're going to, we want you to live in our home, because you would keep on the memory of a family that's there. And that is so important nowadays, you know? You look at homes like Million Dollar Listing LA, and a lot of those homes in Beverly Hills, or the Bird Streets that they have there, the old homeowners that lived there 20 or 25 years, they know that developers want their home, but they won't sell it to them. They want it to remain as a family, which is so important, because of the fact it carries on the family tradition. And as we said, in some places, like in Florida, that Commissioner Rushki was vacationing, he said, "You can tell who are the original homeowners on..." Why don't you tell the story?
On the surface of Waterway. Because all the smaller homes were the original owners, and anytime a new owner moved in, everyone would tear down that house and put up a three-story mansion.
And that's what's happening in the character of that, so congratulations on that, okay? Now, is there a motion? Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission application number 2016 dash 19, and historic register categorization number 2016 dash 18. And I'd like to recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and city clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills agreement, Mills Act agreement, excuse me, with Moore Family Trust, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Tariff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Congratulations. Okay, item number nine, it's getting close. The Warren House, okay. Historic Resource Commission application number 2016 dash 20, historic resource categorization number 2016 dash 19, and historic property preservation agreement 2016 dash 08. I now declare the public hearing is now open. Do we have any comments from the audience? Okay, are you, Ms. Jones?
Yes.
Okay, come on up. And would you please afterwards fill out a little form for us too, please?
Want me to do something first?
No, no, we'll talk and then do that.
I'll just reiterate what everybody's been saying. The new neighbors in Santa Ana, what a warm community this is. We've come from a very, the number one safest town in the country, Irvine, and just didn't find the warmth that we were looking for. The house, it's like walking into a hug. We just love it, and the entire neighborhood, and we're just really happy to be in Santa Ana.
I have a question for you.
Yes.
What is the ornament on your chimney? You know, you have an eagle.
Okay.
But what, we figured, is it a?
There's another, what, when they, when David Michael Madigan came in, he's the person we bought the house from. He had noticed because of the window that there was a bit of a colonial revival look to it. So, it's got some eagles on it. And I think that the one on the front was there, but I believe that the chimney is also an eagle that he put on.
Did you get an impression of an eagle? It looks abstract, maybe it's an abstract drawing of an eagle.
Well, there is, there's a basket on top, which is to keep the sparks from flying.
Okay.
But that's not a...
But, but below that, the ornament, it is an eagle?
Okay, I'm trying to think. The way it comes down like this, and it has, it has a little plant sitting on it.
Okay.
And I don't know whether that's it, it's in kind of a urn-shaped thing?
Yeah.
Is that what you might be thinking of?
So, we just wanted to, I wanted to know, we were trying to figure out, okay?
Well, it's hard to see the house in this picture because of all the gorgeous trees, but it is, it's hard to see it, it's got a really nice little bay window and...
And everything else, but right above that, but that's okay. But it's very interesting, very interesting.
Thank you, yeah, we love it very much. Thank you.
Thank you, okay. Vice President. Madam Secretary, is there anyone in the audience that we should speak on this property? Madam Secretary, do we have any written? Okay, if not, then I clear, let's public hearing close, and bring it back to the commission. Are there any questions? No, then I entertain a motion, please. Madam Chairman. I will move that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission application number 2016 dash 20, and historic register categorization number 2016 dash 19. I also further move that we recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Rania Jones Trust, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and the city attorney. Okay, is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Heatherdale, seconded by Commissioner Albert Sarre. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, motion passed with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Congratulations. Moving on to moving on to item number 10. Historic Resource Commission application number 2016 dash 21, historic register categorization number 2016 dash 20, and historic property preservation agreement 2016 dash 19. Okay, I now declare the public hearing open on this property. Do we have any comments from the public? Is Karen O'Callahan here? Okay, no problem, all right. Any written communications? Okay, I now declare this public hearing closed. I will bring it back to the commission, and I think I would like to entertain reclassification of this. I think we have it as contributive? Is this contributive? But, as we heard from our staff member Ivan and all the rest, that, you know, with the key categorization, it is an important person that made a tremendous. And this was Mr. Warner's house, and to, you know, with the temple, Beth Shalom had done so much here in Santa Ana, and to have its historical roots here. I would like for the commission to consider changing it to key instead of contributive. Can I open for a discussion or a motion?
I would like to make that motion, Madam Chair.
Moved by Commissioner Tariff to move the classification from contributive to key. Is there a second?
I'll second it, Madam Chair.
Seconded by Commissioner Becero. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? And motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Now, do we have a motion for the application?
I would like to make a motion, Madam Chair, that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resource Commission application number 2016 dash 21, and historic register categorization number 2016 dash 20, with the change of being a key property. And I also recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and the clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Karen O'Callahan, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
There is a second? Seconded by Commissioner Garcia. Moved by Commissioner Rushki, seconded by Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Let's give them a hand. Okay, moving on to item number 11. Historic Register Resource Commission application number 2016 dash 22, historic register categorization number 2016 dash 21, and historic property preservation agreement 2016 dash 20. I now clear the public hearing now open. Is there anyone in the public who wish to speak for this property? The Irving House? We...
So, this is one of those love-at-first-sight stories, meant-to-be kind of thing, in that this is a craftsman home, original style, based on the arts and crafts movement historically. And as an artist, as an arts educator, and somebody who came to Santa Ana to work with all the arts programs in the school district, I feel very excited that I actually have a home that's part of the arts and crafts movement, and to find out that the Urbines were connected to the Grand Central Arts Center area, to which I'm very connected as part of the arts community and the things that are happening. This was one of those stories where one of my educator friends lives in the Washington Square neighborhood, and we used to walk all the time, and I set an intention and said, "I'm going to live in this neighborhood." And this house came up one day, and I, and it just was the first one I looked at, and they chose me, because it was a competitive situation, and I'm just so in love and grateful, I just moved in July. So, I'm very excited to be part, just grow more and more connected to this community through the students, the city, through the wonderful things that are happening here, and be a resident, so thank you very much for this opportunity.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak? If not, I now close the public hearing. Oh, I'm sorry, before I do that, we do have written communication, Madam Secretary. Everyone has, from Washington Square Neighborhood Association, Tom Lutz has sent a letter of support of this application. And if I'm not mistaken, Holly, can you tell me, is this the first historic home in Washington Square?
Home near Bear Manhattan.
Oh, okay, okay, before my time. Thank you so much. Okay, if not, I now have the public hearing now closed, and bring it back to the commission. Does any commissioner have a question?
I'll go ahead and make a motion that we adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission application number 2016 dash 22, and historic register categorization number 2016 dash 21, and that we also recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Robin McNair, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and the city attorney.
I second the motion.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Becero, seconded by Commissioner Rushki. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Congratulations. Okay, moving on to item number 12. Okay, item number 12, Historic Resource Commission application number 2016 dash 24, historic register categorization number 2016 dash 23, and historic property preservation agreement number 2016 dash 23. Public hearing on this property, the Yegel House is now open. Okay, do we have anyone from the public who wish to speak for this property? You don't want, come on, come on. No? We spoke with you today, Giovanna.
I do want to say two things. First of all, I want to thank you for considering our house. And unlike everybody else's, you know, we've been in a year, we were there 25 years, we love this house, we love the neighborhood. Blake has died, but he loved it. So, thank you for considering the house today.
Well, thank you for putting, making up the application. Is anyone else wish to speak? Okay, Madam Secretary, do we have any written communication? Okay, if not, then I now clear the public hearing now closed, bring it back to the commission. Anybody have?
Madam Chair, I will be abstaining from this one, only because he was past president of Floral Park, I'm current president, and I just don't want any appearance of conflict of interest. So, I will abstain.
Abstention, okay. Is there a motion? Commissioner Garcia?
Madam Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission application number 2016 dash 24, and historic register categorization number 2016 dash 23, and recommend that the city council authorize the city manager and the clerk of the council to execute the attached Mills Act agreement with Giovanna Piazza, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the city manager and city attorney.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Garcia, seconded by Commissioner Tariff. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion passed with abstention from Commissioner Rushki, and with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Congratulations. Okay, moving on. Okay, moving on. To item number 13, Historic Resource Commission Application Number 2016-26, Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-25, and Historic Property Preservation Agreement 2016-27. Okay, public hearing is now open. Do we have any comment from the public? Are the owners here in the audience? No? Any written communication, Madam Secretary? Okay, if not, I declare the public hearing now closed. Does, I will bring it back before the commission. Does any commissioner have a question? Tell them.
Yes, Madam Chair.
Anything else?
I will be moving to amend the categorization from, from contributive to key based on the significance of the accomplishments of the first owners, Charles and Abby Oaks. I did discover a copy of their book, not the, not the copy that they published. I believe they self-published in 1932 and 1933, probably had a credit here in Santa Ana. That book does exist in a number of libraries. But what I found was a republishion in 2010 by one of their collateral relatives, which is available on Amazon, and I looked at part of it on Google Books. So at any rate, the connection with the houses, they perhaps wrote the book while they were there, and certainly at least published it while they were there. I think Mr. Oaks died in 1934, perhaps still living there, and Mrs. Oaks died in 1950. But now to discuss their accomplishments, it is a, it is a C book, as stated in the description. And in the current edition, it has about three parts, some notes added by their relative and some illustrations. And then the other two main parts, one by Captain Oaks, which just described his adventures, as I recounted here, just to mention one of them, in 1917, munitions were being loaded at Halifax, Nova Scotia, to go to the World War I in Europe. And what occurred was, what is still described as the largest non-nuclear explosion in history. And Captain Oaks and his ship were, as it said, close enough to witness it, but far enough ways so as not to be blown up. That's an example, some of the things he talks about. The other part of the book, which is maybe even more interesting, that Mrs. Oaks accompanied him on at least three of the early voyages, and from what I've been able to discover, also traveled with him into the 1920s when he was a successful shipping executive as well as a captain. And in, in the book, she describes her three voyages. They were married in 1888. First voyage was in 1890. And I might say that from what I understand, it was unusual for a ship captain's wife to accompany him. There weren't very many women that were permitted to do that. This was not unique, but it was pretty rare. And with considerable literary artistry, she describes these rather, I would say, harrowing and interesting voyages. Again, the first one was from New York to Shanghai, China. Took them 168 days one way. They went around the Keep of Good Hope. And the second voyage, they went from New York to Valparaiso in Chile, going around Cape Horn, which was even more harrowing both times. So they just had to go both ways, of course, to get back to New York. So based on the accomplishments of these people and their skill in describing them, I think if we categorize this as key, that would be appropriate, and I'll, so move that we amend the categorization to make it as key.
I would like to second that.
Okay, moved by Commissioner Heatherdale, seconded by Commissioner Maraschke. All those in favor of changing the category from, I think it's the contributive to key, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed? There be none. Motion passed with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Okay, now I entertain a motion for the application. And don't forget the substitution.
Madam Chair, I'd like to move to adopt a resolution approving Historic Resources Commission Application Number 2016-26 and Historic Register Categorization Number 2016-25, with changing that designation from contributive to key. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay. And to recommend that the City Council authorize the City Manager and Clerk of the Council to execute the attached Mills Act Agreement with Brad Harkins and Beth Bannell, subject to non-substantive changes approved by the City Manager and City Attorney.
I'll second that.
Moved by Commissioner Tariff with the amendment, and seconded by Commissioner Bussera. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Motion carries with the absence of Commissioner Schaefer. Let's give that a hand. And what, thank you so much, Commissioner Heatherdale, for going a little bit further in researching that. Wow, what a courageous woman, I'll tell you.
I was intrigued by it, and the more I looked into it, the more fascinated it, it became. Mrs. Oaks' account has really worked up a lot of literary artistry and some very interesting discussions.
Very good. Well, everyone, that concludes the, the business calendar of our agenda. And once again, we want to thank you so much, okay? Don't leave, we have a work study, you can stay, but we just want to say thank you. Thank you, thank you for taking the time to protect your beautiful home and to still future generations will be able to appreciate the architectural style and the families that have grown up in there. So let's give them a hand. Now, our work study is the Heritage Village Sequoia. Don't forget to get your parking validated if you have. Thank you.
Actually, you better help me do this.
I should be able to stop.
All right. I think it's done. All right. Sorry, are you leaving? No. Okay. If you remember, this Heritage Village Sequoia was carried over from our October 6 meeting. So we have Candia, Neil?
Yes, good evening, Chair Christie and Historic Preser, Historic Resource Commission members. We'd like to talk tonight a little bit about some of the options that may be faced in dealing with moving houses or the demolition. We have a very clear portion, section of our ordinance that talks about what would happen if somebody needs to demolish or move a house that's older than 50 years. And it has come up, and there is a very strong, there's a very strong approach to trying to preserve the house. We have a requirement for it to be advertised for sale, that's part of our ordinance. But one of the things that we wanted to look into and consider is the possibility of addressing, moving the houses, and having locations that are available. The houses also have to be, so one of the, the concept itself is that we would have some places that you could move historic structures that would be slated for demolition. And that one of the potential locations, we've done preliminary conversations with the Director of the Heritage Museum of Orange County, and they do have places there where they could be moved to. Here, we're looking, here we're looking at an aerial photo of it. These houses would then be incorporated into the museum. They could be, they could then be part of the museum work, but they would not be a residential structure any longer. To approve the demolition, as, as you know, our ordinance requires you, as the Historic Resources Commission, to approve an application for, for demolition or for moving. And as that process, just like you would approve any other permit, you have the right and responsibility to apply conditions to that. And part of those conditions would be the construction of a foundation, connections of utilities, those sort of options. And this is a proposal that we have here. Another option is, and this is, this is a, this is something that we did when I was working for the city of Pomona. We had a remnant parcel, and we did a, we did, it was called Heritage Circle. We had a remnant parcel that was adjacent to the freeway, between the freeway and one of our local historic districts. And we, the city actually took the land that they, we had, we subdivided, we acted as the developers, we subdivided it, put in a, you can see, if you see up the aerial photo, we put in a cul-de-sac and split it into five lots. And then you can see by this time, by the time this photograph was taken, three homes had been relocated on the site and were purchased by homeowners. So in this case, they remained as residential, residential uses. The homes were saved, they were raised by, they were, they were saved for residential uses, and they were maintained in an, adjacent to a historic area. One of the advantages of this was particularly for sequel compliance, if you maintain the use, you are more, you are able to make a de minimis finding on the relocation of it. Whereas if it's changing the use, you're not going to be able to do that. So this is, this is an option that, that we may want to consider when evaluate as a city, you may want to consider and recommend. We may be coming to you with, asking for your support.